Okay, I'm going to call our special meeting to order. Looks like it's 6:37. Good job. 6:32. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Chris, our mission statement?
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. I'll do roll call. Margaret?
Here.
Jessica?
Here.
Kyle?
Here.
Angela?
Here.
Sheri? Here.
And I am here in a quorum.
Thank you. Next, looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So, support. Listen, Sheri.
Thank you. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is our public comment, portion of our meeting. If anyone would like to address the board, they may do so. While we do not have our regular podium, you can come up to this table here. There is a pad of paper and a pen if you would like to leave your name and number. While it is not a question and answer period, if you have a question that needs to be answered by leaving your name and number, someone will get in touch with you. You have three minutes to speak. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? No? Okay. Then we are going to move on. We are here this evening. We have an opening on our Board of Education, and we are here to conduct interviews. We have three people who have applied for the spot. They are Raymond Perez, Sandra Fortuna, and Rene Keller. And we are going to interview each one individually. We will start with Raymond, and the other two candidates will go into the office, the main office, while Raymond is being interviewed because we ask everybody the same questions so that everybody has the same fair shot at the answers. So, Mr. Perez, if you'd like to step up, and ladies, Jamie will take you to the office. Good evening. Now, all of us on the board have received your information and have learned a little bit about you. But for the people that are here this evening, if you could just tell us your name, a little bit about you, and why you're interested in being appointed to the board.
My name's Sergeant Ramon J. Perez, U.S. Army, retired. I work right now currently with the TECOM at the Detroit Arsenal in Warren, Michigan. I was backed up here from the Quad Cities. Basically, I've spent my entire time here working and haven't really been part of the community. And I figure this would be something to get me in the community, especially now that I got guardianship of a grandson. He's only 18 months. But I would like to try and make sure he's got a good step forward in education.
Very good. All right, thank you. We each have three questions, and we will ask our questions one at a time. There may be follow-up questions to a question the board member asks. When we're done, if you have any questions for us, you are welcome to ask them. And then, when you're finished, you go back, sit in the audience, and we will interview the other two candidates. And at the end of interviewing all three, the board will talk and decide whether we want to appoint one of the three board members, one of the three interviewees. And if we do, we will appoint, and we will also administer the oath of office as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay? All right. So, we are going to get started. And Sheri, you're going to go first.
Hi, welcome, and thank you for coming out. My first question is, what qualities, skills, and experiences would you bring to the board?
Well, prior to the military, I started off doing all sorts of menial jobs like bartending, barback, waiter, busboy. And from there, I progressed into getting into education. I was a bilingual teacher's assistant. And during that whole time, I kept getting, you know, like, atta girl, atta boy, you know, you're doing a great job. Hey, I almost got this deal at St. Ambrose. Go and apply. You know, get your four years of free education and become a teacher. But I didn't think it was, you know, that was my niche in life yet. So, but after that, I got into construction. From there to the military, I did a lot of training of soldiers. And I made sure that every soldier that was under me was able to take my position if I was ever killed in action. So that way, you know, the mission was not dropped and somebody get hurt. And then, from there, I've gotten into TECOM. TECOM, I basically, you know, have to really, really keep an eye on our tax money because I'm, how do they call it? I'm basically separating, making sure our money doesn't get wasted away by either buying too much or buying not enough to have on the shelf for our soldiers. So, when I heard about this opening, you know, I kind of looked into it. And that's what I think you guys kind of do, is make sure that nothing's squandered and it goes to the kids and is for the betterment.
Right, okay, thank you.
What follow-up on that? What attributes do you think a valuable board member possess?
A moral compass. In order to, you know, make sure all the kids, no matter where they come from or what they're going to be, they all get equal education. And therefore, you know, we all should have a moral compass because kids are kids.
Mr. Perez, I have the next question. What do you feel are the most pressing issues that face a school board member?
Well, not ever being a school board member, it's kind of hard to, you know, to say. But I would think maybe looking at the big picture instead of, you know, the small picture at hand, you know, because you never know what's going to happen down the road. So, you know, to me, that's probably what's the biggest obstacle for a board member, not seeing, not being able to see down the road what might happen. They can think, and they can imagine. But if it comes to fruition, who knows?
Thank you. Thank you for replying and showing up and giving us your insight and wanting to be a part of the community. What are the biggest challenges facing public education today, in your opinion?
I would say, when I was a teacher's assistant and hearing from my son that's back in the Quad Cities in Iowa, is discipline. Iowa, for some reason, has basically gone the way of California. Basically, rowdy kids that are taken away from the other kids, you know, makes it harder for the kids that want to learn to learn. And the rowdy kids are basically getting the run of the school now. That's, to me, is the biggest issue, is being able to maintain a proper discipline so everybody is able to learn equally.
What is your long-term plan with the board?
Well, I'm here for keeps until, you know, TECOM decides, you know, to move me someplace else. There's rumors of BRAC, but that BRAC could be down 10 years down the line to someplace in Alabama. But if I'm able to do a good job, and if I can hear from you as my peers that I'm doing a good job, I might, you know, try and go for reelection and keep going until my grandson starts school. Then I would have to, you know, bow out because I would not want to have any type of, you know, discretion between my grandson and I as a school board member.
What do you think the most difficult part of being on the Board of Education is?
Probably showing up twice a month, maybe. Because, you know, you got other issues, you know, other items and family stuff that's going on that, you know, you're going to have to try and stay up with what's going on with the board while still trying to maintain your family life because you got to work. You're working 40 hours a week. Then you got to try and get the school board in twice a month, and yet have family time.
First, I want to thank you for your service to our country.
Thank you, ma'am.
My husband is a veteran, so I appreciate you and all you've done. I guess I'd have to put my little readers on. What do you see as the role between the superintendent and the Board of Education?
Make sure there's a balance. Ensuring that the kids are educated. Make sure the teachers are trained. Make sure we're able to get the proper teachers in their proper spots. Making sure they're paid right. And making sure those teachers, you know, get the payment due, especially if they're doing great by the kids and get them, you know, helping about getting good grades. To be able to, you know, like I saw the sign coming in from New Haven that you guys got so many minutes of scholarship funds. I'm going to be a part of that.
Thank you.
How would you describe your communication style?
Well, seeing I'm still got military bearing, it could be, you know, at times confrontational. But most of that's at TECOM because I'm having to fight the supervisors and the contractors and the people above me that say yes or no on the money. And yet, because I was out there in the field waiting on parts, knowing that somebody back here like me is trying to get them, and they're not there, you know, that's when I get a bit confrontational because whatever I put out there, you know, I can't really see what parts I maintain. But they can, you know, be the division of who's living and who's dying.
So, you're not afraid to speak your mind?
No, ma'am.
Do you have any worries or concerns about joining the school board?
The only concern is being able to make it every time. Because I'm, from March until, I think, September, I'm going to be having to finish up two electives so I can get my, finish on my masters. But I'm going to make sure that I can try and get, schedule those classes around our meetings. And if not, as the president of the board said, it would be upon me to, you know, get caught up, which I do, I work whenever I take days off.
Thank you. After review and discussion on significant issues, the board operates by majority vote. When the majority vote is different from your position, how would you manage the situation?
I would go with the majority vote. That's what I fought, you know, fought for. We're a republic. Even though, you know, even though it's a majority vote, I still had to say, even though it didn't go my way, that's our system. And I'm not going to, you know, have any, you know, do any pouting or anything about it. Just roll on and, you know, maybe win the next battle.
You touched on this when you first spoke, but are you involved in the community in any other ways or is this just your first venture or two?
I used to be with the VFW back in the Quad Cities. And then, when I started school, it became difficult between VFW and school because there's a lot of reading to this. I didn't redo it was so hard to get a masters. Like, you know, when I get my bachelor's, bachelor's, you didn't have to do that much reading. Most of it was notes for the teachers. So, this would probably be my second attempt at being part of the community other than the VFW.
As a current resident of Richmond, what is your perception of Richmond Community Schools?
I think it's about better than some of the, you know, systems I've seen in the area. So, and that's one of the reasons my wife and I bought our house up here because we were living in New Haven, and we didn't like what we was hearing. And when we knew we was getting our grad son, we wanted to come here.
What do you see as our strengths and our weaknesses?
The strengths is that you're still a small town. You still have a sense of family, community. And the weaknesses, you know, maybe down the road as we get older, as the board gets younger, that might become more progressive to where it doesn't, you know, have anything to do with the kids and getting educated like I see other big cities are doing now.
Do you know what the current budget is for Richmond Community Schools and what the process is for reaching a budget for a fiscal school year?
I have not had the chance to research that.
That's okay. Most people don't.
But if I could, you know, illustrate, I do maintain parts, secondary parts to an item, which I can say is the palatine. And this deals with millions and millions of dollars. One part can cost as little as 700 bucks. Another part could cost almost as much as 100,000. So, depending on how many parts I need will depend on how much money I am, you know, trying to get from Congress and from us to get out there to our soldiers. So, I don't think there would be too much of a difference, but maybe a little bit.
Yeah. What ways do you have to prioritize spending? You know, within?
At work, I would have to go from the highest amount to the lowest amount per item. Each item has an in number or a stock number. And I would have to, you know, evaluate, you know, what I have on fabrication or what I have for a repair program or what I have for new manufacturing. And there, I would be able to, you know, figure out how much I would need going forward because I have to have a certain amount coming in until I get to a certain point where the system tells me I have to make a reorder. And I reorder, and it takes me anywhere from six months to a year to get something on the shelf. And I need to get it there before whatever I've got on the shelf is exhausted.
Thank you.
How might you respond if a parent or community member cornered you at the grocery store and asked for your support on a particularly hot issue in the school?
I'd basically ask them, what is their opinion? And, you know, why are they standing for that issue? But I, you know, I would tell them, how I feel, it doesn't matter. I need to find out what the community feels and what they think. And then, you know, then research it on my own to see which is the best way of going. And then, you know, and then after that, vote, you know, what I think is right.
Thank you.
During the course of our job, we face criticism. How are you equipped to handle that?
I came from the Army. I got this.
All right. Have you ever actively participated in or produced a social media platform such as Twitter, Snapchat, or Facebook that produced or encouraged negativity toward Richmond Community Schools or the Board of Education?
No, ma'am. Even if I had any of that media, I wouldn't do that. I would have, I would come here to express my discontent. It's, you know, it shouldn't be, you know, things like this shouldn't be on social media because all it does is generate more bias and more arguments when we should be here discussing it and trying to find a middle ground.
In the challenging times we are facing this year, why have you decided to be a part of the decision-making process on the board?
I'm hoping that maybe my experience in the Army and at TECOM would help. You know, especially when it comes to the big dollar items that are going to, you know, for the kids or equipment or books or, you know, whatnot.
How would you describe an effective board member?
An effective board member would be like a soldier. They would see the mission, figure out how to get the mission done, and get that mission complete. And then, if they're in charge, take charge and motivate the subordinates in following that, you know, that mission to its completion.
What is the biggest improvement you think the school district needs to make?
I wouldn't know right now. But I remember my elementary, they had more books than here. Maybe get more books?
Our motto is guaranteed learning for all students. What does that mean to you?
Guaranteed education for all students should just mean that. All students should be guaranteed that right in privilege of an education from this system. And if any of us fail, including, you know, the teachers, the principal, the superintendent, or this board, it's our failure, not the child.
Thank you.
What makes you the best candidate? We've heard about your background, things like, of that nature. Again, I appreciate your service as well. Thank you very much. And, but what makes you the best candidate out of anyone that we interviewed this evening?
The fact that I'm looking forward to the future. And when that future comes to, or JP, my grandson, starts here, I say, look for success that I didn't get. I didn't have my parents' like keto.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
I appreciate your passion for education.
Very much. Okay, those are all our questions. Do you have any questions for us?
No, ma'am.
No?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming out and taking your time and wanting to be a part of the board. So, you are welcome to sit back, and we will get our next candidate. Okay, our next candidate is Rene Keller. Rene, welcome. Thank you for showing an interest in being on the board. Those of us sitting here at the table have all your information. But if you wouldn't mind taking a few minutes to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in being on the board?
Okay. I graduate from Richmond High. I've been a part of the community since I was 10. My kids go here. I have two kids in the middle school. And I have a seven-month-old, so I will be a part of the community, the school district, for many years to come. I have a lot of background with school finance. So, I believe I can benefit the board in that area with my knowledge. I've had experience with negotiations. I've experienced with deciphering contracts. And I've been part of insurance negotiating and bidding. And I'm familiar with communicating with staff. So, I think I would be a huge benefit to that area since I already have the background in it.
All right, good. As I told you on the phone, we are going to ask three questions, but each one of us are going to ask three questions. And so, we will start. There might be some follow-up questions from what we've asked. And then, when we're done with our questions, you'll have the chance to ask us something if you'd like. Okay? So, we will get started. Sheri?
Hi. Thank you for coming out and wanting to be a part of this. You might have already answered some of this question, but what qualities, skills, and experiences would you bring to the board?
Well, I have over 20 years with public schools. And like I said, I've dealt with negotiations. I actually do payroll for Anker Bay schools. So, I've been just in Anker Bay for 13 years. And so, I have been a part of the administration office for, throughout, like, the negotiations. When we went through pay freezes, I helped with figuring out creative ways to give back to our employees during that time.
A follow-up on that. What attributes do you think a valuable board member should possess?
I think you should be able to listen to what the community has to say, what the staff have to say, and listen to all sides before making a decision. Be a level thinker and research things before you decide on something.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, sorry. What do you feel are the most pressing issues that face a school board member?
I think the communication between staff and administration and the community to keep those lines of communication open. So, there's always an open forum for the community and staff to speak.
What are the biggest challenges facing public education today, in your opinion?
What would you do? Yeah, find, like, finding the money to basically make everybody happy and make sure everybody understands the financial burden that is on the school district to run.
What are your long-term plans for the board?
I'm not really sure. I, this will be my first experience. So, my long-term, I'm hoping I'm a positive, have a positive effect on the board and help in any areas that may come up, long-term. It all depends what comes our way. I really can't say.
What do you think is the most difficult part of being on the Board of Education?
To not take things personally. Because it's, you have to treat it, this is a job. So, you have to treat it as a job. Your personal feelings cannot get involved.
What do you see as the role between the superintendent and the Board of Education?
Communication is what it's, like, basically, there should be always an open communication between the superintendent and the board on any issue. The board is the, basically, the superintendent's boss. So, you have to help him with his job also.
How would you describe your communication style?
I guess you can say, I think I'm a very open person. I think I'm very approachable. So, I believe people have an easy time communicating with me. If they have an issue, I don't think people have a hard time expressing that to me.
Do you have any particular worries or concerns about joining the school board?
No, no, not really. Because my intention is just to help the school district. So, if you go with the intention just to be helping the district, I think only positive things can come from it.
After review and discussion on significant issues, the board operates by majority vote. When the majority vote is different from your position, how would you manage the situation?
Well, obviously, they have a reason for their opinion. I'd be, I guess that, whatever the decision, the vote is, that's what it is. Not like I can change it at that point. The board has already made their decision.
Are you involved in the community in any other ways?
Well, my kids go to school here. They play softball. Just basically being mom. That's all I am.
As a current resident of our district, what is your perception of Richmond Community Schools?
Oh, I love Richmond Schools. That's why, at first, my kids were at Anker Bay and I was doing school of choice just because of daycare reasons. And once my kids were able to do elementary- And once my kids were able to do elementary here, I moved them back to Richmond. So I think it has a lot to offer.
What do you see as our strengths and or our weaknesses?
Well, I love the small town. Growing up in a small town, you always feel you're supported. So I believe that is a huge thing. I want my children to feel that way when they go to school and be proud of Richmond schools, that they're a part of such a great community. In the downfall, you said?
Weaknesses.
Weaknesses. I'm not really sure. Can't really think of anything offhand. The staff, I think, are great. I haven't had, I have not had one negative thing happen since my kids have been here, so it's hard to say.
Do you, excuse me, do you know what the current budget is for Richmond Community Schools and what the process is for reaching a budget for a fiscal school year?
Do I know what the current budget is? I do not know what Richmond's budget is. I do know what you get per pupil, just over $8,000. I know I looked up your audit report from last year. Still had a fund balance about, I believe, was 8%. So that's pretty good. It's above 5, so that's a plus.
That's a good one. When putting a budget together, what are ways to prioritize spending?
Students come first. And then, of course, you have to consider your staff and your staff's benefits and what it like, you have to consider like your electric bills, like you have to look at all areas, just as if you're running a household.
How might you respond if a parent cornered you in the grocery store and asked for your support on a hot topic?
Ask for my support to support them on a hot topic?
If you were on the board, if something was, you know, happening at in the district?
It would depend on what the issue was, but if I didn't agree with it, I would just have to let them know that that's their opinion, and if they want to have that opinion, that's fine. There's, everybody has a right to an opinion.
Follow-up on that a little bit. During the course of this job, we face criticism. How are you equipped to handle that?
Consider like not everybody's going to like what you're doing because they may disagree with you. So like I said, if that's their opinion on things, I'm not going to take things personally. I'm just gonna, you're just gonna have to let it go. That's one of the, that's one thing I definitely have learned with my job. You just have to let things go because you can't make everybody happy, but you still have to make a decision what you believe is best for the school district.
Have you ever actively participated in or produced a social media platform such as Twitter, Snapchat, Facebook that produced or encouraged negativity toward Richmond Community Schools or the Board of Education?
Thank you.
In the challenging times you are facing this year, why have you decided to be a part of the decision-making process?
Because I believe I have a lot to offer the district with my knowledge, with my background, because I understand like everybody comes from different backgrounds when they join a board, but I have been with public schools in the administration office for 20 years. So I have had the experience of figuring out little things where it helps the district be successful behind the scenes, I guess you can say.
How would you describe an effective board member?
One who's positive and stays mindful of what our purpose is, which is the kids.
Thank you.
I know you said we didn't have any weaknesses, but what is the biggest improvement you think the school district needs to make?
Well, I know my kids complain about nowhere.
Than than every other kid.
Right? I'm not really sure of any, like, I don't believe there's an issue with staffing. Like, I'm not really familiar with that area very much. Maybe once, if I'm on the board, I become more familiar and be able to point out things that I see that are occurring behind the scenes at this, like, I don't, I'm not really familiar what could possibly be wrong at this point.
Thank you.
Our motto is guaranteed learning for all students. What does that mean to you?
No student turn away. You're gonna find, a teacher will find a way to teach your child. If they don't learn one way, they'll figure out another way for that student to learn.
What makes you the best candidate for us to choose over anyone else that we interview this evening?
I think I'm a very positive person. I think I have, my background is very strong in public schools, and my goal is only to do what is best for the school district. I don't have any other vote of besides what is best for the district.
Okay, well, that's all of our questions. Do you have any questions for us?
No.
No?
I'm sorry. Maybe, like, once I get my feet wet, I probably will have tons of questions. So I'll feel like, can you stop, Renee? All right, can you stop asking questions? But usually, it's once I'm in things, I'm full of questions.
Well, thank you again very much. If you want to have a seat, we have one more candidate to interview.
Oh, where the tissues work, we cry?
No, our questions weren't there. Okay, our last candidate tonight is Sandy Fortuna. And Sandy, while we have all of your information and we know a little bit about you, if you wouldn't mind just sharing a little bit about yourself for those that are in the audience and why you're interested in the appointment?
Okay, sure. I have, I live here in Richmond. I have two kids that have graduated from Richmond. I am a insurance adjuster slash investigator, and I have been for over 20 years now. I don't currently have any kids in the, in the school system. I have a lot of, a lot of interests, actually. I have been involved with the choir program, the theater program, the RGFA program here and the community, and I am interested in being on the board because I'm very passionate about the community, the school, the students. I am very proud of the education that my children got here. I, and I, I have time now to do it, so that's why I want to do it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
As I told you on the phone, we're going to ask some questions. We have three questions we're going to ask, and there may be follow-up questions from questions that are asked from another board member. And when we're done, you'll have the chance to ask us a question if you haven't.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll get started.
Hi, thank you for coming out and wanting to be a part of this. You already kind of answered part of this, but what qualities, skills, and experiences would you bring to the board?
I feel like I would be a good part of the board because I, I deal with, the way that I look at things analytically, just on a daily basis for my job. So I am used to analyzing a lot of different details, things like that. I have no problems, I guess, with asking questions, getting as much information as I can. I want what's best for the students in this district, and I am okay with sticking to what I want to vote for, you know, even if it's not per se the popular vote. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a follow-up on that. What attributes do you think a valuable board member should possess?
I think that they should be professional. I think that they should be compassionate. I think that they should be understanding. And I guess.
Mark's picture.
Okay.
What do you feel are the most pressing issues that face school board members?
I feel like it's, I'm sure that it's very hard because a lot of pressures from especially a small community. So I feel like there's probably a lot of pressure on people to do or say things that necessarily maybe aren't their own opinions. There's probably a lot of pressure to maybe get information from board members. I would assume, I mean, that that would be some of the issues.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for interviewing. What are the biggest challenges facing public education today in your opinion?
Well, the budgets would be probably the biggest. I think probably the biggest is budgets, money.
What is your long-term plan with the board?
I would love to be on the Board of Education. I have been to many meetings. Ones I don't go to, I watch, and I'm just very passionate about the community and the school. So, I mean, I don't, when you're asking me what's my long-term, I would like to be a member on the board for as long as I possibly can.
Thank you.
What do you think the most difficult part of being on the Board of Education is?
I mean, kind of spoke a little bit earlier with the pressures and stuff, I think, that each board member faces, but also trying to do what's best for the district, the students, and with what's given to them as far as funding goes and where it should go and be. Those are probably the most difficult.
Thank you.
What do you see as the role between the superintendent and the Board of Education?
Well, I would, I, I look at it like he would, or she would keep you informed on the, any issues within the school, as well as all of the political stuff that goes on regarding, regarding any, any current like bills or anything as far as public education, as well as the budgets, you know, the, doing the budget and stuff.
How would you describe your communication style?
I'm very open. I'm honest. I'm very calm. Easygoing, I think. I'm gonna get along with mostly everybody.
Thank you.
I have the next question for you. Have you ever actively participated in or produced a social media platform such as Twitter, Snapchat, or Facebook that produced or encouraged negative negativity toward Richmond Community Schools or the Board of Education?
No.
Thank you.
After review and review and discussion on significant issues, the board operates by majority vote. When the majority vote is different from your position, how would you manage the situation?
I mean, I am, I'm a very open listener, so I have no problem listening to other people's points of view. I deal with that on a daily basis in my current job, to be honest with you, and I still have to come up with my own decision. I'm 100% able to make my own decision confidently. I mean, I can disagree with you and still talk to you about something, you know, just because we disagree.
How will you react, though, if we disagree and you're not part of the majority?
I would explain my viewpoint and why I didn't disagree, so that we can have an open discussion about it.
It's me.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's me. I was looking at you, waiting for you, and then realized it was me, sorry. Do you know what our current budget is for Richmond Community Schools and what the process is for reaching a budget in a fiscal school year?
I, if you're, are you asking me specific numbers?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know specific numbers. I, I don't know the numbers. I know like how much you, I think I know how much you guys get per person. Is that what you're per pupil? Is that what you're asking me?
No, no, I was, it's, it's a question that nobody ever knows the answer to, really.
Okay, good.
Unless you, unless you do some research into it prior, but it's.
Yeah, I mean, I could probably give a estimate, but I don't know the numbers.
What, and when putting a budget together, what do you, what, what are ways to prioritize spending?
Well, I think that we have to, with whatever the most pressing needs are, whether the most pressing needs be the teachers or programs, or, you know, I think you have to prioritize what is most needed.
Thank you.
How might you respond if a parent cornered you in the grocery store and asked for your support on an issue the board was handling?
I'm, I'm trying to get maybe a little bit more clarification. Like, are they asking me to listen to their point of view, or they're asking me to, or they're trying to persuade me to vote a certain way?
Yeah, maybe trying to persuade you.
Okay.
Or just wanting you to listen, or.
Yeah, I mean, I would be more than willing to listen to what they have to say, obviously, and their point of view, but as far as like sharing with them, like what I'm thinking at that time or whatnot, I don't, I would not be willing to do that, depending on what the issues are. I mean, I'm sure that there sometimes are some confidential, confidentiality issues that obviously I wouldn't share. And if I don't have all of the information, if we haven't spoke about everything, if I don't have every, all the information about it, it's hard for me to make a decision of, to say how it would be at that time.
Just a follow-up on that. During the course of our job, we face criticism sometimes. How are you equipped to handle that?
Well, I'm a mother of two kids. And I've been criticized by them. Fine. No, I have a very tough job right now and have had, for over the 20 years, sometimes I have to deliver some bad news, and I get some pretty nasty responses to those things from people. But, I mean, it is what it is, and the facts are what they are. I mean, I, I mean, I'm not one to act out on something like that, if that's what you're asking me. I can have a completely professional, calm conversation with somebody who totally disagrees with me and is agitated.
Do you have any worries or concerns specific about joining the school board?
I don't have any worries or concerns, no.
In the challenging times you are facing this year, why have you decided to be a part of the decision-making process?
You asked me why I've decided to try to be a member of the board.
During the times to spend, you know, the, facing some criticism from the public and from other areas and just some discord. Some people may say, why did you decide to now get involved? You know, it's kind of, some people would shy away, maybe because of the situation.
Okay, okay, that's a fair question. I currently now have the time to be a member on the board. Uh, I currently now have the time to be a member on the board. Um, I was a very active parent and didn't necessarily have the time ever before this as he opened up, and I thought it would be a great, you know, it was perfect timing for me.
How would you describe an effective board member?
An effective board member would be somebody who's, uh, listening to, um, all the ideas, information, um, analyzing all of the facts, and making a judgment based on the best interest of the students and the district.
Thank you.
Having sent two children through, uh, through our school system, what do you see as our strengths and weaknesses?
Um, they are two totally different times, so they're probably different, um, for each kid, to be honest with you, but, um, teachers have always been very strong here. Um, my, both of my children still have decent relationships with some of the teachers, um, even after graduation, that have been, uh, very inspiring to them, not just teachers, but just, you know, people, but mostly teachers. I would say teachers probably would be the biggest, um, the biggest plus, and negative, uh, mm, not as many programs, maybe, um, available.
Thank you.
Our motto is guaranteed learning for all students. What does that mean to you?
Uh, it means that, um, all students are guaranteed to learn. (laughing) No. Um, well, I guess, bigger that means to me is that, um, if you're athletes, or if you're more into the arts, or if you're, um, you know, no matter what your, your interests are, you know, uh, you can learn in this environment.
Thank you.
Out of all of the candidates that we interviewed this evening, what makes you the best choice?
Um, well, I can't say anything bad about the other candidates, because I don't really know them. (laughing). But, um, I know, I can only, so I can only speak about myself, and I know that I'm extremely passionate about this, and I'm, I'm ready, I have the time now, I'm passionate about my community, um, I, I know that it's, if you have a strong, uh, school district and you have a strong community, it's best for everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it for our questions.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for us?
Um, just one question. Um, uh, what do you think is the most challenging part about being on the board? Being a board member?
Good question.
Very good question.
Well, I'll answer for myself, but, um, a lot of it for me is, I was in your spot. I interviewed, um, about a year and a half ago. I did not realize the time commitment.
Okay.
So, it is very time-consuming, and you have to be willing to put it first. I mean, just this week, we have two meetings. We have another meeting on Monday. Sometimes we're here on Saturdays and Sundays. Sometimes we're here for four or five hours. So, that can be a time restraint on your family life.
I would agree. I'd agree with that.
And it goes beyond just the meetings, of course. Like you said, if you want to do your own research, you want to put time into it.
It is worth it, though.
Okay.
But just realize that it can take a lot more than just coming to meetings every other week.
Sure.
It's a lot of research and learning and, um, just reading and going through the process of being a good board member and understanding the role.
And I would just say that if, uh, the magnitude of the things that we decide, uh, you know, we've, unfortunately, we have, like, student disciplines throughout the year, and, um, what we decide is very important for the, for the school body itself and for that individual. Uh, I would say that those honestly are the toughest things to do, for me.
Okay.
Yeah. I'd have to agree.
And I just think that a challenge is, um, it's a volunteer position, and it is a lot of time and energy you are taking away from your family or whatever other things you like to do. And, um, being, being critiqued slash criticized by people who don't have all the facts when we are sitting here trying to do the best we can with the information we have, and it is, um, you do have to have a really tough skin.
Sure.
Um, and if you don't, it's probably not the best spot for you.
Yep.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. That concludes our interviewing, and, um, now I'd like to open it up to the board to have any kind of discussion regarding the candidates. If anybody has any thoughts or what they'd like to share with the candidates, or...
I would just like to say, regardless of whatever is decided, you are all, all three of you are fantastic candidates to be sitting at this table. I'm very impressed by all of your answers.
And it's really great to have three people that want to come out and, uh, and be interviewed, truly. And it's very hard to be interviewed in front of a whole room full of people, um, you know, so we, we do appreciate it very much. Anybody else? Okay, um, then I guess I'm looking, is there anyone who would like to, um, say anything or make a motion if you have a candidate that you would like to put out there to be appointed? You don't even get 10 minutes to just think?
I'll throw out just a concern that I had, um, for Raymond, is that I worry that you might not have the time commitment, um, to put in. That's my only concern. My, I really personally like Renee, um, her background and experience that she could bring in.
For our talk, I, um, Mrs. Fortuna, Sandy, you know, I had to ask her, what does she like to be called, because she's been Mrs. Fortuna for years. Um, her daughter was our school board rep during high school, so she was always at our meetings and involved in stuff, so, um, I was excited that you, you know, took the time to, okay, now, now I want to try this. Um, I think that speaks volumes to you, that you've sat on the outside of you or the other side of the table, um, and now want to, want to join us. Um, and, um, the passion that you have for really, um, someone who just is getting to know our community and that kind of stuff, I think that says a lot about you. Not very many people would step forward and want to do something like that without really knowing a lot of people or a lot of stuff that is going on in the community, um, and I think that says a lot to, towards you. Um, and Renee's someone that I have known for a very long time, um, and, um, there, there is a, a skill set, but, um, when you come on the board, the, the skill set that you have, we always have to be careful that we aren't the ones that are running, you know, the school district. Um, the superintendent is, but, um, I think someone who's lived here, for I'll say forever, you said 10 years old, but that's forever, and your, and your kids are in, in school and that, you, you have a vested interest, um, and that's real positive. And, and Mrs. Fortuna, by your kids being graduated, you don't have to have kids in the district to have a vested interest. You have to believe in public education and the community in which you live. So, um, thank you to all three of you. Um, no matter what way we go, we're going to be just fine.
I too agree that all three candidates have a great passion for education, and that's what we want to see on our board. We definitely want somebody who is going to be interested in gathering information, facts, and then being able to move forward with those and keep, uh, information confidential when necessary. Um, I also have a concern about Mr. Perez and his time commitment to the board. I know that, um, you know, the outside activities and the meetings are something that can sometimes cause a strain on a board member, um, but I think they're all very good candidates as well.
I agree. I was highly impressed with many things that you all said, and you all clearly have passion for education. Yeah. A time constraint is a lot to consider. And I appreciate, um, I, I went on the board, too, after all my children got graduated, so I can appreciate your perspective and still wanting to be active in our community and, and school district, because that's kind of how I was. Thank you.
I'd like to move to a motion to appoint Sandra Fortuna for the vacancy position on the Richmond Community Schools Board of Education effective January 28th, 2020 through December 31st, 2020.
Support.
Okay, that was Kristen Sherry, supported. Okay. Is there any discussion? Guess we already had it, right? Okay, um, it has been moved and supported to appoint Sandra Fortuna to our board opening. Um, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries five to one. Congratulations, I guess, now, after we told you how terrible the time constraints are.[1696.36][1696.36](applause) Ramon and Renee, we thank you very much, and we look forward to, who knows, the next time around. But at this time, Mr. Lumsley, Mrs. Fortun, Mrs. Fortuna, if you wanted to come up, we are going to administer the oath of office.
Raise your hand to the team after me.
Okay.
May I solemnly swear?
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state?
The Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of member?
Of, of the office of member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities. Thank you.[1749.36][1749.36](applause)
We are adjourned at 7:35.